Okay. We're good to go? Oh Rico, I can't hear you. You're on mute.
It's uh, it's loading right now. It should be starting up.
Okay. It says it's live on our end, so.
Good. Can you hear me right now?
Uh huh. Alright, am I good to start? For those of you who are attending, I apologize for the tech issues. You would know that Rico and I are literally eight feet from each other. But Rico, am I, am I? Good to go?
You are good to go.
Okay, thanks.
Alright.
Alright, everybody, welcome. Uh, thank you so much for joining us. It is June twentieth at twelve thirty-three P M. Uh, this is the public hearing for the Move On When Reading Rulemaking Package. It's R seven dash two dash three one eight. Uh, as a reminder to all of you attending virtually, uh, this meeting will be recorded and archived and is viewable um, on YouTube Live, but also we will have it archived on the State Board webpage for viewing later for any who were unable to attend. The new next slide Rico? So, uh, just a little overview of today. Um, we have two hours set aside for this hearing. Uh, I will be delivering a brief presentation on the rulemaking package and then we will go to stakeholder feedback. Um, as part of that process, board staff will collect the feedback. Um, I'll go into this in a little bit more detail, but the um, the rules of the hearing are such that board staff does not interact with with speakers. This is like a call to the public in a, in a board meeting. For those of you who are familiar, each speaker will share, but they're the board staff. We will not be interacting with the, with the speakers. And then we'll gather that feedback, collate it and provide it to board members. Uh, next slide. So again, this meeting is live. It's um, it can be found on the board's YouTube channel. There we have a, a robust number of speakers signed up for today, so each speaker will have two minutes to offer comments when we get to that portion of the hearing. Uh, again, as a reminder, Rico and I will be here listening and I'll introduce us in just a moment. We'll be here listening, gathering the feedback, which we will then collate and take to our board members. And um, please do not, as a reminder, unmute yourself until it is your turn to speak. And next slide. Um, so before we jump in, I'm Sean Ross. I'm the Executive Director of the Arizona State Board of Education. Uh, it's nice to have so many folks here with us today to provide feedback. We really appreciate you all being so actively involved in the process. And uh, with us today, Rico, do you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, my name is Rico. I'm the Project Policy Director here at the State Board and I should uh, thank everybody for attending.
And thanks, uh, big shout out to Rico who's coordinated all of the tech and the um, the invites and everything. So thanks Rico, I really appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Again, just gonna give a brief overview of the rulemaking package and so I'll start with just a quick table setting of Move On When Reading. You'll see it referred to as M O W R, uh, the acronym in the presentation. Sometimes I may inadvertently refer to it as M A O R. That's the acronym that we uh, folks use to describe it. Um, so if you hear me say M A O R, that's what I'm referring to. Uh, Move On When Reading was uh, legislation passed in twenty-ten and then first fully enacted in twenty-thirteen. Uh, it provides forty-five million dollars annually to schools that support K-three students. And it provides about one hundred and fifty dollars per K-three student per year. Um, and that funding is required to be used on supporting K-three reading. As part of the requirements of the program, every school that serves K-three students submits an annual literacy plan and then has a tri-annual data submission. Uh, those are due by October first, February first and June first of each year. And then Move On When Reading um, at heart is about a, a balanced uh, multi-tiered system of support where students are given a valid universal literacy screener within the first three weeks of school. Students who have areas of struggle are then given a specific diagnostic, battery of diagnostic assessments to determine their exact area of struggle. They then receive targeted interventions um, to support their needs, our progress monitored every two to four weeks. And then the intervention uh, cycle continues until those students are reading at or above grade level. So again, just a little quick table set for anybody who might be unfamiliar. Uh, next slide. So the um, this is just a, a quick peek at the third grade English Language Arts exam in Arizona over the past eight years. Uh, this is just some data table setting for the, the focus of Move On When Reading, which is third grade reading. As you'll see between twenty-fifteen and twenty-nineteen, third grade students, the percentage of third grade students passing the exam was increasing. Um, and the number of third grade students who were in the minimally proficient range was lowering, though Arizona students do tend to be at the polls. They're either passing or in minimally proficient. Uh, however, as you'll see from the last three years of data, uh, pandemic and post-pandemic data, the number of students passing has gone down and the number of students minimally proficient has risen. So again, just a little table setting for Move On When Reading and, and why the legislation um, was passed back in twenty-ten and continues to this day. Next slide. So we're gonna dive right into the, the updated um, rulemaking package. So there are four primary sources of the updates that you will see and and in the document that is shared, that Rico shared with the public hearing announcement, the changes that were made were in blue. So those were new additions to Move On When Reading to the rulemaking package. Everything in red um, was directly from what had already been in rule and that is from statute as well. So um, really the big focus is on those areas in blue. Uh, those changes came from four main sources. One of the primary sources was the State Board of Education Ad hoc K-three Literacy Subcommittee. This is a subcommittee that met over the course of about three years. Uh, it was an eleven-member subcommittee that had representation from district charter, um, advocacy groups and, and literacy experts across the state, uh, was chaired by Terry Clark from Reedon, Arizona. They produced a list of formal recommendations for the board. Uh, the board was then charged in legislation with doing an evaluation of Move On When Reading in twenty-twenty-one and produced its own list of recommendations, which incorporated the recommendations from the Ad hoc K-three Literacy Committee and added some new recommendations as well. You'll see a little screen capture here from that document. Um, that can be found in the December twenty-twenty-one State Board meeting materials. You can see the actual document. Um, and it calls for much of what you see in the rulemaking package was in that State Board adopted list of recommendations. In this example, um, the, the recommendation that data be disaggregated by student subgroup came directly from those State Board adopted lists of recommendations. The other two places were stakeholder feedback. When we opened rulemaking, the board voted to open rulemaking back in February. We actually let the board know that this would be a little bit longer of a rulemaking process than is the usual. Because Move On When Reading is a, you know, rather high stakes piece of legislation and impacts so many students across the state. We wanted to make sure that we involved stakeholders from across the state, so we met with uh, you know, number of literacy experts um, at the state level, the national level, L E A level. Uh, we met with stakeholder groups, uh, including, you know, Reedon, Arizona, uh, our friends at the Charter Association, um, Suzie Kanata, who I, I think might be here um, to get some uh, special education, make sure we had a lot of special ed folks at the table. Uh, so we took stakeholder feedback in and then of course, State Board member feedback as well. Um, drove some of the, the changes that you'll see, though primarily the, the updates to the rulemaking package really do emanate from that State Board adopted list of recommendations. Alright, next slide. So there are a few big buckets in which the changes occur and, and instead of diving into each change individually, we're sort of gonna group them by type. Um, and now what triggered the opening of the rulemaking package? And this is, this is pretty much par for the course. Rulemaking packages are usually triggered by a change in statute. And so um, House Bill twenty-twenty-six changed the requirements for Move On When Reading. It used to be that um, well, actually originally, every school that served K-three students in the state submitted an annual literacy plan and tri-annual data. Um, there was a law passed, I believe in twenty-sixteen, that um, schools, school districts with letter grades of A or B were allowed to submit every other year, basically odd-numbered fiscal years. Uh, and then in uh, the most recent legislative session prior to this one, House Bill twenty-twenty-six changed that so that every school again submits every year. So statute changed, which prompted the opening of the rulemaking package. Uh, let's go to the next sort of bucket of changes. So next slide. And what you'll see here is an increased focus on students with disabilities um, in the rulemaking package and this came from um, a number of special education advocacy groups that we met with and you know, was a, an area of focus for member Krevikis from the board, who was a uh, you know, state and national special education advocate. And you're gonna see that these are, are primarily grouped into one type, which is really just making sure that um, in number two there, you will see that um, a requirement that special education staff be included as part of the literacy team that, that creates or revises or reviews the annual literacy plans. This has actually always been guidance from Arizona Department of Education. This is the first time they're specifying it rule. But again, the hope is to help strengthen that bond between special education and general education teachers and instruction by codifying that in rule. Uh, number four you're going to see there is going to be a focus, and this is, you're gonna see this kind of throughout the presentation, a focus on special populations, uh, particularly vulnerable populations like students with disabilities or English language learners. So gathering a little bit more information about how those students are doing, in particularly how those students are progressing if they move on from third grade. And then uh, number seven, the current literacy plans have schools enter in the programs, the core reading program they're using, the intervention program and then the uh, whether it was being added is uh, a, a, the program they're using for special education students now. It doesn't mean that every one of those programs has to be different. It just, so you uh, you know, school may use Program X for their core reading program and Program X may have an intervention program and that's what they use for tier one and two and Program X may have a sped core curriculum and that's what they use for their sped kids. Um, so you would just enter that into the literacy plan, but that information hasn't been gathered before and so there is a a desire to have more information on what reading programs are being used with students with disabilities. So so that's one of the uh, big buckets, an increased focus on special education. Let's go to the next slide. Another one of the big buckets of changes is gonna be a focus on struggling readers as they move from third to fourth grade. Uh, the Arizona Department of Education has always provided guidance to schools that any student promoted from third to fourth grade who failed to meet the Move On When Reading Cut Score, but was promoted due to one of the four good cause exemptions that those students, the, you know, soon as they start fourth grade, receive supports and interventions. Um, that guidance is being codified now into the rulemaking package. Um, just to table set, in case any of you are unfamiliar, the uh, Move On When Reading Cut Score for Arizona is the lowest cut score in the country of its type. It's embedded about halfway down in minimally proficient. So a student who fails to meet that cut score is you know, is, is definitely demonstrating some struggles in reading. Any student who fails to meet that cut score is a candidate for retention, but there are four good cause exemptions um, that will allow that student to be promoted. One is a student is on an I E P and the I E P team determines that a promotion is appropriate. Two is the student is an English language learner and has less than um, two full years of E L instruction. Three is that the student has a di- uh, disability in, in reading such as dyslexia. And then the fourth is something people call the one bad day exemption, where a student uh, fails to meet the cut score on the statewide third grade exam, the reading portion. However, the school has a plethora of evidence that that student is reading uh, and is making sufficient progress and so can use that data to promote. We're gonna talk about that in a little bit more detail um, in a second, but um, effectively what the rulemaking package is calling for here is that, you know, there's, there's really no time to waste with those kiddos. If they are promoted to fourth grade, it's known that they're struggling and so they should be receiving um, supports. Now you'll notice the language in the package is very careful not to prescribe the, the specific strategies that must be used. It just says, as an example, um, that way schools can still determine what is best for their students, but it is understood that all of those students definitely need supports from the first day of fourth grade. Uh, next slide. So the, one of the other big buckets of change, and this came directly from the State Board adopted list of recommendations um, and then was further supported by stakeholders and State Board members as we were prepping the rulemaking package. Um, and it is to provide uh, what they consider to be more actionable data. Currently in the requirements for Move On When Reading, schools submit the tri-annual data by October first, February first and June first. And those data are submitted and they're disaggregated by grade level. Uh, the change that you'll see in the rulemaking package is that by twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, the start of that school year, thereby giving an on-ramp for schools to prepare for this change, uh, the data would be submitted by federal subgroup. Um, and so you'll see that there's a note in there about subgroup counts. Um, student privacy data and, and FERPA dictate that data should not be able to be used to readily identify a student. And so N counts under uh, under ten or under should not be reported. So that's specifically called out in the rule because I know we knew from stakeholder input that that was a concern. So we made sure to include that in there. Uh, and then we have the subgroups mapped out here. Um, and that, tho- those data would be submitted in that manner. This would be new for schools. Um, and then A D E will use that data. I'll talk about how A D E will, will um, go a little bit further with that data in just a bit. Next slide. Oh, I so actually, sorry, will you go back one Rico? So let me talk about that now, actually. So the um, there is also feedback from the State Board, from members of the State Board, that they would like to see that students with disabilities data disaggregated even further by disability type. Um, instead of having schools do that, uh, the rulemaking package actually calls for Arizona Department of Education to gather the data from schools and districts and then to do the disaggregation on their end. So that piece is not on the schools. That this part is, this subgroup piece would be a change for schools. But the piece that you see a little bit later in the rulemaking package regarding students with disabilities, that actually is um, assigned to the department. So again, the big buckets were a focus on um, a change in data, the change in statute, the um, focus on supports for fourth grade students who were promoted due to one of the good cause exemptions and then uh, you know, an increased focus on students with disabilities. So that's actually gonna bring this brief presentation on the rulemaking package to a close. Um, Rico is now gonna bring up the slides with our list of people for call to the public who are, who are going to share uh, feedback with us that we'll take to the board. Additionally, if you submitted written feedback, so Kelly and a couple of others, um, we have gathered that feedback and we've added it to the agenda for Monday's meeting, for the June State Board meeting. So do know that 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 feedback is presented to the board as well. Um, so we're gonna take this list as we come and uh, if some folks aren't here with us, we'll give them a second to say here and to speak, and if they're not, we'll go on to the next person. Uh, Rico will be keeping time. Again, because we have a, a pretty robust list of folks for this call to the public, um, we'll be keeping pretty strictly to the two-minute timeframe. So if you hit two minutes and you're finishing a sentence, that's fine. If you hit two minutes and you're midway through to something, we may say we need to move on to the next speaker. Uh, we are not in any way trying to be rude. We just have to be considerate of everybody's time. So uh, this will actually be the time for Rico and I to become silent just to gather the feedback. So Jake Logan, are you with us?
I do not believe we have Jake in here.
Okay. Um, so Scott Shelley?
No Scott.
Um, Charmin Badio?
We have Charmin.
Okay. So Charmin, if you're gonna, you're gonna kick us off.
Oh, thank you. Um, I appreciate that very much. Um, um, I appreciate you guys taking the time. I, um, at the time, I really don't have much feedback to give. I um, I'm pleased to see the changes that are being implemented. Um, I think it's making it more robust. Um, I feel like this is barely gonna be my second year um, going in as um, the L E A approver that oversees for our schools, our um, mower. Um, so I think that having this kind of guidance will be much more helpful. Uh, it's much more clear-cut. Um, and I think it being more robust will provide more guidance and direction for what we need to be doing to provide for our students and their families. Um, I'm not, that's where I'm at right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Charmin. Um, so we're gonna go to our next speaker. Uh, Emma, and, and actually I should have said at the very beginning, I'm gonna do my best with names. Um, but if, if I inadvertently mispronounce your name, I apologize. Uh, Emily Chokri?
No Emily.
Kristi McGarvey?
No Kristi.
Melissa Peniman?
We have a Melissa.
Wonderful. Oh, uh, Kristi McGarvey is with us. Um, Rico, she says she's not gonna unmute. While Melissa's speaking, would you mind letting her know in the chat how to unmute? Thanks Rico.
Yep.
Uh, so Melissa, you're going to be up.
Alright, um, I'm happy to hear about some of the changes that are being made to the M A O R requirements and um, like um, Charmin before me, I do believe this will help us and create a more robust system of support for our students.
Alright, thank you Melissa. Um, so uh, Kristi, were you able to unmute?
I'm uh, finding her in the chat right now.
Okay. Give Rico a second here.
There we go.
Kristi, are you, are you able to hear us?
Could be unmuted now.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can Kristi. Thank you. Thanks for your patience. Uh, go ahead.
Um, so I mostly just have a couple of questions, if that's okay, rather than explicit feedback. Is that alright?
So we um, because of the protocols of the public hearing, Rico and I are not able to necessarily respond to the question.
Okay.
Take your questions. And then um, you have a couple of options. If you'd like to leave your email address in the chat, we can certainly respond to you after.
Okay. Um, my questions are really, I appreciate that, you know, someone will be analyzing the effectiveness of the local education agency's reading program. I'm just wondering who that person will be, who will be in charge of analyzing that. Um, I'm also, it's an ongoing concern that schools are required to use a different program for reading interventions rather than their core literacy program. Um, I know there is research that says that what students need who are struggling is repetition, so that's a question. Um, and then lastly, I I've brought up this concern before, but if a school offers more than the required number of minutes for core literacy instruction, can that ever count for some of those intervention minutes? Forty-five to ninety minutes of intervention on top of like two hundred minutes of core instruction is very difficult to fit in the school day. Um, so yeah, those are my questions, but I very much appreciate, you know, being invited to this and being given a voice um, when making these decisions. So, thank you.
Thank you so much Kristi. Um, so I, I apologize that we are not allowed to, to respond directly at the moment, but um, I happen to know the team that runs Move On When Reading at, at A D E very well. Um, and I'm gonna put Michelle Rooton, who leads that team. Um, Michelle's wonderful. I'm gonna put her email address in the chat for you. And um, she can actually answer every one of your questions pretty readily. Um, and I, I would really encourage you to reach out to her. Oh, you know what? I think she has one L in Michelle. Let me put it in again, sorry. Um, I would really encourage you to reach out to her because I actually just, without going into too many specifics based on your questions, I actually think she can provide some, some clarity on a couple of your questions that you'll find pretty helpful. So, so I'm putting her email address in the chat there. Um, she's in charge of Move On When Reading for the Arizona Department of Education. Okay, um, so Melissa Pen- oh, I did believe Melissa went, right Rico?
Yeah, we have Melissa.
Okay, um, Sarko White?
There is no Sarko.
Okay. Um, Char- uh, Charles Bertrand?
No Charles.
Jennifer Ramirez?
I am not seeing a Jennifer.
Uh, Timothy Blickenstaff?
Uh, no Timothy.
Okay, so next slide of speakers. Um, Terry Clark?
Oh, right. Should be unmuted Terry.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. Um, I just wanna say thank you to the State Board team for such a thoughtful and collaborative process in gathering um, stakeholder feedback. I'm Terry Clark. I am the Arizona Literacy Director. I help guide the work of the state's Early Literacy Collective Impact Initiative. The rules package that you're sharing today includes a number of changes that came from recommendations from the State Board of Ed K-three Literacy Ad Hoc Committee that was convened over a multi-year period. And um, I served as the Chair of that committee and there were a number of representatives throughout the state, administrators, teachers, specialists in literacy, parents, and it was inclusive of public and charter. Um, so we believe the inclusion of the, of the reading plans by every school and local education agency as well as subgroup data by grades as part of the uh, plans to be collected by schools will help better ensure all students receive high-quality, effective literacy uh, instruction. The pandemic only magnified the issue of our lack of data, especially on subgroups, so we could determine which communities had the highest need and the most vulnerable students um, would get access to more effective literacy interventions as early as possible. Better data collection and a comprehensive understanding of strategy students receive supports um, teachers and administrators and being able to deliver highly effective quality literacy instruction. I just wanna remind everyone that only forty-one percent of all students passed the twenty-twenty-two state assessment. Those struggling readers are not only in C D and F schools. They're sprinkled throughout our schools throughout the state. Uh, the most troubling statistic is forty-eight percent of all students scored minimally proficient, the lowest in our assessment category. And although Arizona has made extraordinary progress over the last ten years, in fact, in two thousand nine, Arizona was one of three in the, of top states that made the most progress in Nate fourth grade reading. Arizona, if we're going to achieve um, our goal of seventy-two percent by the end of twenty-thirty of all kids reading, we have to adopt priorities and policies that reflect a shared vision for all students reading. And these rulemaking change seem poised to help just do that. And thank you to all the stakeholders across the state that are passionate and committed to helping all students in Arizona reach their reading potential.
Thank you.
Terry. Uh, Jackie Hale?
Uh, we do not have a Jackie Hale.
Uh, Becky Jones?
No Becky Jones.
Minette Klenner?
Uh, we have two under Minette Klenner, so I'm gonna try to, I'm just gonna unmute both. Alright. Minette, you should be on.
I'm on. Uh, Becky is actually the other Minette, so I'm gonna let her speak for, on behalf of us.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks. I actually don't have a public comment, but thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, uh, Minette, did you wanna, and I, I apologize if I mispronounced your name. Do you wanna add anything?
No, I'm great at this. I don't have a comment.
Okay. Uh, Amy Carlyle?
I am not seeing it, seeing an Amy.
Amanda Patri?
No Amanda.
Deanna Warner?
We have Deanna.
Alright, Deanna, go ahead.
Thank you. I have no public comment.
Thank you. I have no public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you, Deanna. Cheryl McKinney.
We have Cheryl. You're unmuted.
No comment.
Thank you Cheryl. Nirveer Khalsa.
Hello. Thank you for this opportunity to provide feedback on the proposed Mauer rules. I appreciate the intention of Mauer to provide a strong foundation in literacy skills in the early grades. However, the rules for implementing Mauer do not recognize the multiplicity of paths to learning offered by district and charter schools and go too far in dictating how schools should teach. Rules have been added over the years that have continually increased the regulatory burden on schools. The original intent of charter schools, and I'm the director of a rated Charles Charter School, was to provide alternatives to traditional public schools and to support school choice. Increasing regulations make it more difficult to continue to offer alternatives as the regulations force non-traditional schools such as Montessori schools to adopt traditional strategies to stay in compliance. Changing the nature of the schools as they were originally described in their charter contracts, forcing schools into traditional molds limits parent choice. When we opened Khalsa Montessori School in nineteen ninety six, we were told that the board would not tell us how or what to teach as long as we were teaching the standards. Our effectiveness would be developed, demonstrated by student performance on the state test. The emphasis was on parent choice and it was predicted that parents would vote with their feet and the market would decide which schools were desirable. Both the state test and the market have proved the effectiveness, value and desirability of Montessori schools as demonstrated by results on the state test and the full classrooms with waiting lists at most Montessori schools. We believe these items in Mauer limit parent choice by forcing conformity rather than inspiring innovation and alternatives. So there's basically two issues that we have with the Mauer rules. One is that mandated school schedules do not consider the unique methods used in Montessori education which emphasize an individualized approach, independent work time, flexible schedules and student choice. And the current definition of evidence-based curricula has left Montessori off the menu of approved choices. Although there are decades of existing studies that demonstrate the effectiveness of Montessori education, such as a recent study in South Carolina of forty public school-based district Montessori schools, many of who are Title I schools, where researchers found that Montessori students scored significantly higher on ELA state standardized tests than non-Montessori students across all three years of the analysis.
Nirveer, I apologize for interrupting. I gave you about an extra minute there. But yeah.
Can I just wrap up?
Sure.
So we think it's important not to inadvertently limit methods that work by creating regulations that tend to push round, square pegs into round holes. And the other, so these two issues are our main issues of the mandated schedule and, and then the current definition of evidence-based.
Thank you Nirveer.
Thank you.
So Rico, Jane Lemon in the chat, she, she didn't have a comment, so we can go to the next slide. Zaretta Gonzalez.
Zaretta, you're on.
Zaretta, did you want to share public comment? So we'll move to Tara McWigan.
No Tara.
Elizabeth Ramos.
No Elizabeth.
Dania Gold.
No Dania.
Lexi Higby.
No Lexi.
James Francis.
No James.
Gabe Warrior.
Also no Gabe.
Kelly Powell, Kelly, I think you're with us, right?
See, yeah, it looks like we have Kelly. There we go. Kelly, you should be unmuted.
Am I audible?
We can hear you Kelly.
Excellent. Well, thanks guys for the opportunity. And let me start by saying that I think some things are going quite well in the state since our fourth grade NAEP reading scores are as high as they ever been. And I appreciate Terry Clark's comments as well on that. The, in terms of the goals for the state, NAEP doesn't tell us the proficiency, the percentage of students that can actually read. And I would probably extend that to say that none of our state tests or the national tests do. If you look across the last decade and a half, you could say that make an argument that anywhere from twenty four percent of fourth graders can read up to ninety nine percent if you look at the current Mauer cut points that are under the control of the board. My, my biggest concern is, is data as always, and that is the collection of more data. The disaggregation of the benchmark data will be messy and it will generate undue burden to to all public schools. There's an example of this data. There's a data sheet posted on the ADE website that shows pattern of, of benchmark data for grades kindergarten through third grade. And it's interesting because first off, it only reflects about seventy percent of students in any grade level. I do realize it was during a global pandemic. But beyond that, it shows that the winter scores and spring scores are much better than the, the fall scores and the spring scores are much better than the winter scores. Basically, it's a low, high, low pattern that you see. And that is a function probably of the norms of these data or perhaps aggregating together a dozen or so benchmark tests. My suggestion and the association's suggestion, the Charter School Association is to probably take a deeper dive into the existence data sources. Disaggregation by special ed groups is absolutely important. And I think it'd be interesting to look at the third grade data for A A S A, looking at the Mauer cut point data for A A S A and looking at the oral reading fluency of the ORF measure, which has been collected for two years and has not been shown. I'm afraid by expanding the benchmark data either to a student level or to a ungodly disaggregation process for each of our schools, it will just create more confusion rather than focus. And I will submit, I had a four-minute preparation, prepared statement. I'll just submit that as in writing as well, but thanks guys.
Thank you Kelly. Up next is Margot O'Neil.
Can you hear me?
Hi Margot, yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
I'll try not to speak too fast. I am the head of a charter Montessori school and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Having been a school leader for over thirty two years, I understand the importance of providing a solid reading program for our students. There is no question about our students' need to show reading proficiency by the end of the third grade. Arizona revised statute fifteen dash one eighty one, paragraph A specifically states, charter schools are public schools that serve as alternatives to traditional public schools. They are intended to offer additional academic choices for parents and students. Parents choose a Montessori school precisely because of the Montessori philosophy and curriculum. In making that choice, they expect and so deserve an authentic Montessori education. If we are not permitted to use our Montessori materials and curriculum to teach our students reading, we are not offering an authentic Montessori experience. That fact diminishes their actual choice. Arizona measures student and school success using state mandated assessments, which are required of all public and charter schools. These assessments are used as part of a letter graded process for each school, thus allowing schools to be compared using a consistent measure. Montessori schools have performed exceedingly well, with most of the twenty plus Montessori schools in Arizona consistently receiving a letter grade of A or B. Therefore, one could conclude that the Montessori method of teaching reading has been consistently successful. On behalf of the twenty plus Montessori schools in the state, I'm respectfully requesting that the board consider continuing to provide the Montessori curriculum as a choice for the core reading program in the literacy plan template so that we do not have to replace our curriculum with something inauthentic. Along these same lines, I request that the board consider permitting us to teach reading using our Montessori scheduling rather than be required to use a fixed subject schedule, which is also inauthentic to a Montessori program. Finally, I request that school administrators not be required to disaggregate their student data. As a veteran school administrator, I believe this will add a tremendous amount of unnecessary administrative burden, given that the data already exists in another form at the Department of Ed. Thank you in advance for your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you, Margot. Next slide. Regina Bennett. We're not seeing Regina. Okay, Janice Palmer.
We do have Janice. Janice, you should be on.
Awesome. Thank you Sean, thank you Rico and your entire team for your work on this rules package. My name's Janice Palmer, Senior Vice President of Government Affairs and Public Policy for Helios Education Foundation. Helios has three core focus areas, third grade reading, college going and college completion. And we know that college completion begins in the early years and this rules package addresses just that. We are in full support of the adoption of this rules package. The rules before you today are a result of extensive work by various stakeholders. Sean, you went into that at the beginning, led by the State Board of Education's K three ad hoc a few years ago, as well as legislation to bolster our efforts to ensure that every student can read by third grade. The tall order, as we've seen Arizona Progress Meter has set a goal of seventy two percent by twenty thirty. We've seen slow study gain from twenty fifteen to nineteen and then saw the dip during the pandemic. But our efforts are rebounding and much of that is due to the infrastructure that's been put in place by Move On When Reading. During this work, we realized that there were some areas for improvement. So first, you see in the rules package, the fact that we were missing out on the best practices of A and B schools seemed counterproductive. We should know what these schools are doing well and we should share that information. In addition, we tell schools all the time that data should inform decision-making. Currently, we don't disaggregate data by subgroups like income, special education, race. Having this information allows us to better intervene to help struggling students while at the same time being able to see macro trends that will better inform statewide policy. And last, I want to hit on a bigger issue that I see that's surfacing about that, you know, somehow educating struggling readers has become an administrative burden. That we should backtrack on our commitment to early literacy and just not collect that data so that we don't know how well students are doing or not. And I, and from a Helios perspective, we find that unconscionable. Helios believes wholeheartedly that early literacy and being able to read by the third grade is a pivotal marker in a student's educational journey. Not being able to read can and many times does impact students for their entire life. And we should do everything possible to help our youngest students by being as informed as possible on how they are doing and providing the appropriate, appropriate help. This rules package does this. And once again, I thank you for your time, Sean Rico and the team and your work on helping our littlest ones attain the literacy skills needed to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you Janice. Thank you, everybody. And we know, we very much appreciate all of the feedback. The, what the next steps, actually, we do the next slide Rico.
Yeah.
So just to let you know, we want this process to be really transparent. The next steps will be Rico and I will collate the feedback and provide that to board members. Again, feedback that was provided in writing. So Kelly, you specifically referenced a letter that you had sent. Or any, any people who've emailed us. We've also added that to the Move On When Reading update item for the Monday meeting. So that way the public and board members have access where, you know, we strive for transparency. And we will follow up with stakeholders kind of as needed. You know, going back to the, one of the first folks who spoke, you know, the, her questions could very readily be answered by ADE staff, which is why I put Michelle's email in the chat. There were a couple other folks who had some questions and concerns that I, I think we can help address. So I'll reach out privately and either direct you to someone who can help or some resources where maybe you can get some answers to those questions. Right now, the, there, there is an update for this package on the agenda for the Monday State Board of Education meeting. It's, there's no vote. It's just an update. We actually purposely did not want to go to a vote in this meeting, so we wanted this hearing to happen first. And we wanted to be able to receive your feedback and, and be able to take that into account before the board considered closing room, rulemaking. Again, we will share this feedback with board members and then we expect that they would vote on rulemaking in the August meeting, which is August twenty eighth and twenty ninth. It's actually our meeting slash retreat in Yuma. So thank you again for participating in this process. We're just super thankful for all of you and all of the great work that you all do for kiddos every day. Many of the folks on this call I know personally and have known for years and you're all great, wonderful educators and just transformative people who are doing great work. And, and so thank you for participating in the process. We value your feedback. We value our relationships with you and and are very thankful for you being here. So with that Rico, we will call this hearing to a close one nineteen PM on June twentieth. And thank you again to all of you. If you have any questions, please feel free to follow up. I will put my email in the chat. Just in case anybody needs it. And we will, as soon as I'm done with that, we will bring this to a close. And then thank you again Rico for your help today.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.